Roll call.
Roll call, this action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member answering present. Mr. Murray?
Present.
Mr. Selby?
Present.
Ms. Wilson?
Present.
Mrs. Higgins-Botham?
Present.
Mr. Kazook?
Present.
All board members present.
Adoption of the agenda.
Of course, this is a special call board meeting, can't add anything to the agenda, and I have no recommendations to strike an item, so if there's no corrections or amendments, I recommend that the agenda be approved as presented.
I make the motion to approve adoption of the agenda. I'll second it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Okay. Next item is public comments. Does anybody have anything you'd like to bring? If there is, we move on. Number six. Request for letters of interest for professional architectural services for Russell County High School Science Lab renovations.
So using the ARP, the American Rescue Plan, American Rescue Plan funds, the Kentucky Department of Education has given tentative approval for us to renovate our existing science labs at our high school. The current labs there are all original to the, to the school when it was built. I could go on and on regarding the current condition of the labs. And so we have four that's right there in the middle of the school, what I call the middle, kind of like the pod, and they share a storage room and everything quarter, and then down at the freshman dock, there's two other labs. So the first step, but let me also include that the renovation of our science lab, it's on our current district facility plan that the board had previously approved and the Kentucky Department of Education has previously approved. We had that really good conversation with Jay Ritter at KDE and talked about how to make this work. It's a great opportunity, in my opinion, to make use of the ARP funds to get some really much-needed program taken care of for the, for the high school. So this is how this would, this process would work. You all, if you, if the board so chose to approve this, we would solicit this request for professional architectural services. Requires an architect to do this plan, advertise in newspaper, take the qualified firms, come back to you all at the second June meeting, because we always have two in June, to approve that. And then the architectural firm could develop the BG1 that I would in turn bring back to you all with all of the cost estimates. We've been look, we've been working behind the scenes and getting some ideas from the science department. They're so excited at the high school at this possibility. So this puts all of that in motion. So we would do this, we'd have the BG1, we would select the architectural firm, we've had the BG1, you all would have to prove that, KDE would have to prove that, and then we could move in the direction of getting the project going. One thing that's very crucial to this is that has to be done and all the money spent by September 30th of 2024, when all of the ARP funds cease to exist. They disappear at midnight, the night before, don't be Miss Carnes, at that night, is what they told us. So we're just really excited. I know the science teachers are really excited about this possibility. It's been a long time coming, and this is, in my opinion, again, a great use of the American Rescue Plan funds to make this happen for our science teachers and our students for a long time to come.
If there's 34-year-old that needs something there.
Yeah, well, some of the, the gas lines, I mean, things just happened in 35 years, you know, especially with that pod of that school. I recommend that Russell County Board of Education authorize superintendent forward to solicit letters of interest for professional architectural services for Russell County High School Science Lab renovations. And that's what this advertisement would be put in their local newspaper. And this will be a very tight budget. We wouldn't have a CM, construction management on it. We would have to, the board would have to do a waiver anyway, because it's not that threshold, and we need all the funds to make that work anyway.
How much funds do we have in the American Rescue Plan?
This, this project alone with the architect, and they just did Taylor County High School, what, four years ago? Our science teachers looked at them, they're estimating the construction cost for these six science classrooms to be at 1.2 million, the construction cost.
We have, is there, have that much money?
Yes, yes, we still have that much money left for the American, of the American Rescue Plan funds. Yeah. We, we've been very strategic on all that, and this will, this and another project I'm going to bring to you all at the June board meeting is the security system camera upgrade for the district. KDE has given us approval, well, I have to bring that to you all, but we've been working with that of what a cost would be. And the district needs that, Mr. Greider has worked tirelessly with that. Took the, took the gentleman around just so we could get a quote to bring to you all. And that too can be played, paid for with the American Rescue Plan, because it falls under the safe and secure learning part of that plan. And we need a camera system bad in this district. Pardon me? Very good camera, this, this is great, I sit on one of the meetings as well. But I was going to bring that to you all at the, at the, at the next June board meeting, the first June board meeting, because we have to incorporate some things in the GMAP and all of that before we could have it blessed by the Kentucky Department of Education.
My county has been finding that it's easy to get them.
The security features of the cameras are great, aren't they, Mr. Greider? And it would have our entire campus very well covered, and not that I'd want Mr. Greider to do this, because he's got a life, but he could sit at home and check any of the cameras. And visitors come into school, would have a display, they know they're on cameras. And the secretaries could say, you know, who's that outside at door 10? You know, all that, those things like that, so.
That's not, that's not in this.
No, that's not in this, no, no.
I make a motion. It's another thing, I have to read all that.
That's fine, that's, you got it. I'll second it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is artworks deed of easement.
So you all previously approved permission to move forward with an easement for the sanitary sewer lines to be, to be ran through some property owned by the Board of Education. This is specifically there between James Elementary School and Russell County Board of Education. That was approved at the March 20th, 2023 Board of, Board of Education meeting. The official deed of easement is now presented for your all's approval. I included the whole, the map, the layout, all of that issue. And they'll fix the, they've been great to work with, been great to talk with, they'll fix the dirt and everything back, but that allows them to have the sanitary sewer line back to that new development that they're working on with those cabbages and things are now.
How many names you go down there?
Well, they've already moved offices and really opened it up down through there. And they'll, they'll take care of fixing everything back, and I have no doubt whatsoever that they will. So this is the actual deed of easement between the Russell County Board of Education and Artworks Realty LLC, which is their official name for this part. And Mr. Hoover drew this, and Mr. Wilkerson drew this, the deed of easement up.
They'll, they'll be responsible when anything happens to it over time.
That's right. And it's a legitimate firm that they have, Mr. Murray, that will go through it and do the, do the work and everything like that. And at that one meeting, you know, we talked about a straight line versus the way that it's curved, but it's the lay of the land is why they have it kind of sneaking around, yeah. He'll cut through the bear property.
The bear?
The bears.
Maybe run it out.
Yeah.
Give it a pass.
Need a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the deed of easement between Russell Springs, or Russell County Board of Education and Artworks.
I'll second it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is authorization for purchase of one new school bus.
So at a previous school board meeting, you all accepted and approved the grant for the Clean Diesel Grant in the amount of $33,874.75. This, purchase of this new school bus will meet that grant requirement of the specs for the bus to, to, to meet the grant requirement. The bus is $135,499. We, we expend that, and then the grant will reimburse us $33,874.75. And as Mr. Murray noted at the, before the board meeting started, that's, we'll have the bus for right out at $100,000, which for today's prices is a good price, really good price for a bus, and also give us another bus for the fleet. We do have to destroy a bus then in its place. We can't, we can't keep, we have to take one of the older buses out of the fleet, because that's part of the requirements of the grant. You get one that pollutes the air more than one of the new ones, and we, then we remove that bus from the fleet, and we could, we could scrap it then, but it cannot be serviceable.
I'd like to destroy interference.
I know, I know, you said that one time. I don't know if you was here, Mr. Selby, but he offered to take a rifle through the engine, because we had to bore a hole through it. So I recommend the purchase of one school bus to the Kentucky State Price Contract in the amount of $135,499. And that's in addition, of course, to the buses that you all previously approved.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Ms. Joyce?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Item is salary schedules, fiscal year 24.
The Russell County Board of Education shall, shall annually establish a schedule of compensation for extra services, hazardous duty supplements and supervision. Payments for those services shall be included in employees' regular salary. Extended employment positions shall be established in position job description funded in the district budget and specified in the addendum to the employee's contract. And this is per Russell County Board of Education policy 03.22 and KRS 160.290, section 1, and KRS 160.390, section 2. So the attached salary schedules, unfortunately, I don't care to say that, reflect no change from fiscal year 23, except for the following tables for the instructional assistants. The instructional assistants with 15 to 19 years of completed service would increase by 54 cents per hour. That's a 3.8 percent, it goes from $14.21, $14.21 to $14.75. 20 to 24 years of experience increases by 67 cents an hour, that's 4.7 percent. It, it goes from $14.30 to $15. And 25 years goes from $14.40 to $15.50, which is a dollar and five cents increase, which is 7.3 percent. As you all know, salary tables last year reflected an average of 10 percent for classified and 5 percent for certified. At that board meeting, it was noted that we would look at the instructional salary tables for instructional assistants for this, for this year. Ms. Carnes and I looked at them, were really, really competitive with most all the districts at those first few years. It's when, it's when the instructional assistants have been with us longer that we lose that ground. And so that, this, this keeps us a lot more competitive and very much closer to most all of our districts around us of touching these 15 to 19, 20 to 24, and 25 plus. This is kind of, the longer you've been with us, the less increase they got compared to other districts, and especially this for the 25-plus years of that dollar oh five. So at minimum, instructional assistants would have an average of 13.8 percent, even if they'd been with us 15 to 19 years, up to potentially 17.3 percent over the past two years. And I don't want to, we had this budget item, or this item first before the budget, and I want to go ahead and just talk about the budget just for a minute, because it makes this make better sense. I would love to recommend to the board another 5 and 10 percent. But I can't do that and be responsible to you all, knowing that we're taking that $844,000 cut on SEAK. And that's very early numbers based upon attendance that was pulled from this year, and of course, we have our working budget in September. So $844,000 SEAK budget, less than what we got this current year, plus we're picking up two school resource officers with the COPS grant being out, plus the 5 percent for certified last year and 10 percent for classified, Ms. Carnes can speak on this with the budget. Our contingency is lower this year than it was for our fiscal year 24 than it was for fiscal year 23, because that raise made into that, I mean, it did. Another thing that's really concerning is that $844,000 cut, that includes an additional $100 per child next year that the, that the state budget includes. So that encompasses that, $100 additional per child. It's, it's not unlike a lot of school districts, our attendance has never recovered pre-COVID. Prior to this year, we have been funded at the 18, 19 school year with attendance, pre-COVID, when, when attendance was really, really good. In addition to that, we lost kids to homeschool that we've never recovered.
We have 300 now.
We have about 300 kids on homeschool. Pre-COVID, we had about 150, which again, is not uncommon to a lot of districts. Don't get me wrong, there's growth districts during this. Some districts have what's considered growth districts, they, they got an increase just because of their, their population shift. We are stable so much on enrollment, or actually a little bit of increase. It's the attendance and how that funding is calculated that has killed us. So again, I would, I would love to, to recommend to the board that we have races again. Certainly, our faculty and staff certainly deserve that. But I can't do that and feel like I'm being responsible to the district, knowing that as much of a cut that we're looking at taking for next year for that SEAK. In addition to that, we, I mean, again, everybody deserves it, but a lot of districts didn't, weren't able to give a 5 and 10 percent like we did last year as well. And then some districts, let's be honest, they pay more than we do anyway, some districts pay less. Ms. Carnes, you have anything to add to?
It's just not your own checkbook if you, you ain't got it, you can't speak.
Well, again, these, these tables here, 15 to 19, 20, 24, and 25 plus, were the ones that were off, off culture the most when we were looking at those. There is a neighboring district that pays significantly more than that, but, but we're not at a position right now to, to compete with that. But I recommend adoption of the attached salary and extra service salary schedules as presented. So nothing else changes regarding any of these salary schedules, but with the exception of those three tables on the instructional assistants.
What does that mean, extra service salaries on that, does that mean all employees, teacher-wise? It says all salaries and extra service salaries.
Yeah, and there's no increase for them either. I'm sorry, what's your question?
I said, what, what's that saying, that extra service hours, that's some difference?
Yeah, that's on the second page, that's, and covers like a, a teacher that may coach, coaching gets paid extra.
I thought that's what it was.
Yeah, or extended school services, principals that work extra days beyond the teacher contract, the central office that works extra days. That also encompasses things like people that take up tickets at the, at the basketball game, at the rate, at the rate that they get paid, all those different things like that.
Yeah, I thought that's what it was.
It's anything in addition to your regular salary.
Yeah.
Or, Mr. Murray, if you're only, let's say you only coach for us and don't work with us for us otherwise, then you're paid strictly off that extra service salary schedule. So let's say you, you were a soccer coach and you didn't teach or wasn't employed otherwise, then you would only get paid that soccer coach.
Right.
Yeah.
Where do these numbers come from? As far as the, the salary or the hourly rate? Where do those, how do you, how did you get those numbers?
Developed over a number of years, and they've just kind of grown. I don't know where the original first one ever developed.
There's not a base that state goes by?
No, 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 there's not a base, no, no. I see what you're saying, yeah, no, no. There's no base, there's no, like, a minimum category that has to be?
Right, because I know, when I was with the city, there was, you had a structure.
Yeah.
If you was at this level, you, you was from 1501 to 1675. And if you had a different degree or a different certification, classification, you was in a different one, and you was from this dollar amount to that dollar amount.
Of course, on.
I don't know if the state actually mandated that, or is that something left up to the board?
On the, on the teachers, if you get a master's or a rank.
Rank one, rank two, or whatever.
And then otherwise, it could be just based upon your years of, of experience for that job, you know?
I don't have a problem with that, I was curious on how.
This salary, does that, that includes health insurance and all that?
Yes, yeah, by the state, state contribution.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're, yeah. If you have a job that works, like bus drivers are paid four hours. So that meets the minimum threshold to have the state insurance, yeah.
Bus drivers get paid 10 minutes?
Four hours.
I thought, I thought we were going to hang one back for five.
Oh, they get paid for four.
Okay. I know it was.
All of our routes are done within that time. J-bays and some other ones are sometimes longer, and handicapped, and then they're, they're given. But your regular traditional bus route is done under four hours, and that gives them time for pre-trip and stuff, yeah.
On the walk out that five, I thought we raised it to five, when bus drivers are doing that. Guess we did, maybe, maybe we was talking about.
Need a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept it, as presented on the extra service salaries.
I'll second it. Ms. Joyce, second.
Ms. Joyce, I'm sorry.
Roll.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item. It's fiscal year 24 tentative budget.
Ms. Carnes, I didn't mean to get ahead and instill any of your thunder about the budget. So you all know, we had the, the draft budget in January for review. KRS 160.470 requires local boards of education to adopt a tentative budget. This is the tentative budget, has to be done by the end of this month, and then we'll have our working budget in September, where we'll have more final numbers on that, on that SEAK. So I'll let Ms. Carnes, I know she has a few highlights she wants to point out to you all.
Yes, so there's nothing really drastically different in this budget than there ever is. It's just mostly updating the salaries for the next year, updating some staff that have changed throughout the year, and you know, that kind of stuff, and the rest of it, we kind of try to hold steady, you know, all of our other things that are in there. We do have, of course, that quite large decrease in our SEAK to be, you know, looking forward to have to account for in there, which basically had to come straight out of what we were able to budget for the contingency. And then also our, you know, salary increase that we gave for this current school year that we've just finished up, we kind of gave that, knowing that that was likely to kind of eat into what our balance was, at least initially, and it definitely, you know, did do that. We do have a little bit of good news for next year, and that is the retirement rate for our classified staff is going down a pretty significant amount. You know, there for a while, that thing was like a rocket, you know, shooting up at enormous rate. And it went down a little bit this year, but it's going down for next school year from 26.79 percent to 23.34. So that's a nice little decrease there, that helped us, working that into the budget helped a little bit. And it's my understanding that it is likely to go down to 20. something percent for the following year, for the 24, 25 school year, is what I'm hearing. I don't think they've officially set the rate, but they're kind of predicting that it's 20. something at that point. So that's very helpful to us, because there for a while, you know, they were capping it at only 12 percent, it could go up each year, and that was killing us, I mean, that was, that was absolutely hurting us. So this is helpful for that number to go down. Like Mr. Ford mentioned, you know, we needed to absorb a little extra money in the budget to, to take care of having those school resource officers, but I think we all agree that that's just something we need, you know, that we, we need to have, those are essential things. So there wasn't really a choice but to figure out how to add those into the budget. Of course, I think we all know that fuel prices, diesel fuel prices that are running our buses aren't going down. They're, it's still a big, that's one of the bigger ticket things that's in our budget. And, you know, aside from salaries, salaries, you know, 80 to 85 percent, and then you have the bus fuel is a big ticket item, and also, you know, electricity is always one of our bigger ticket items. And you know, everything else in there, there's just not a lot of fat in this budget, there hasn't been, I don't know if there ever was, but I mean, you know, we've had a number of times, we've nickled and dimed everything down to the bare minimums, and we've kept it at that, you know, we've, just like I said, I go through this budget, and we update the salaries and staff changes. We don't really do anything to those other categories unless it's obvious we need some more money in electricity rates, or obvious we've got to have to have some more money for fuel. But there's not a lot of what you might call fat in this budget that we could, you know, start carving out of there, it's just not there. So that's why I think it's very concerning when we look at these attendance numbers and what's that, equating it to such a big loss for our district. Again, like we said, that's getting $100 more per student, and we still losing that much money. So imagine if we weren't getting that extra $100, where that would put us. And, you know, looking at some of that and thinking if that trend continues, if, if the legislature, you know, next year's a budget year, there's a lot of talk about changing it from calculating it with average daily attendance to.
To enrollment.
Your membership or your enrollment.
Yes.
Which in some ways would be great, but I think when we say that, everyone is thinking, oh, that'll be more money, because we're going to get the same base times these more students, that is not how that would work. They will cut that base down to where their overall spending is roughly the same, and you just get less per pupil, but you get to count all of them all the time, instead of on the attention side. Might make it a little more stable and less volatile for me in the year, when it's not dependent on that, but it's not going to give us a large sum of extra money. Probably, you know, the only thing to do that is, is get kids at school. And I know to some extent, we, we don't want kids to come to school if they truly are ill, but I think we've gotten in a habit of maybe not thinking that it's important that our kids be here every day, as we used to really push that. And it's obviously a very important factor in our district, because that number not only drives our SEAK funding, but that number comes into play in a lot of our other grants as well, like Title I. That number is a driver behind a lot of our sources of revenue, not just the general fund here. So that could hurt us in a lot of other ways, but that's, it's, it's a lot of money to think of absorbing. If we were to lose that much again the next year, before you know it, that nice tidy little balance that we've worked so hard to build up will be, you know, you can erase it very quickly. It takes you years to scrape your way up to have that.
But it can be gone.
And you can lose it in a year. I mean, you literally can wipe it out in a year's time.
And this, this, this is a prime example why a district has to have a good, healthy contingency balance.
It is.
To weather those, these times like this.
And this, I mean, this budget, we've been, the last couple of budgets, able to add more budget, more in that contingency code, because we had a nice, healthy balance, so we had some good cushion. It's the, what I would call the bare minimum. It's down to basically the legal limit of what you must put in there as a contingency. There was no way we were going to fund the things that we currently have without lowering that number, so.
I, I just want to note again, too, the, the additional staff, and it's been a blessing, and it's done great things for kids that we picked up, that you all have agreed to provide, the extra instructional assistants. Every school has an extra intervention teacher, all of that, this 23, 24 school year, that's, that's over. And that money, that, but, that money's budgeted within that ARP fund for this 23, 24 school year, but there's no way our budget, our regular operating budget can pick up all the extra people that we're paying. Of course, we've, we've known that, we've said that every year, and we try to remind, Ms. Reed and I talk about, I hope, I hope people remember that, you know, when it comes to that, but all these things, and, and the money has been great. We've got to do things that we couldn't, fix the roofs and purchase textbooks and provide summer school and provide after-school services, and, and I'm really proud of the money, Ms. Carnes and I were talking about this the other day, of how this district has spent that money, because I think I would stand by, every bit of that money we've spent is, is exactly what the intent of that money was to be spent for. And it wasn't some kind of pie in the sky of questionable expenditure. I would stand by any bit of how we've spent all those funds. But I cannot stress enough that the extra staff that are employed with that, our general, I would not come to the board and ask you all to pick that up out of general fund, because we can't do it. We cannot do it. That is correct. And some of that may take care of through with attrition. Some folks have, like, some of the instructional assistants have moved into permanent jobs, and then another temporary job will be hired for a year, you know, because they've been there now a couple of years, and they've shown that they can do a really good job. And so like, you know, we've got some positions right now that will be a one-year job based upon this funds, and people, we even advertise it that way, don't we, Ms. Reed, so they know going into it, that's just a one-year job. And not to say that something may come open for them, but the number will still equate to the, the number that will be let go, yeah. Instructional assistants and the teachers.
It's about where you're retiring, you can have it one year.
Yeah, yeah, and through attrition, like I said, someone may be picked up through attrition, but. And we've done good things for kids with that, the purchase of the extra buses, and, you know, it's, it's all good and allowable stuff, fixing the science labs and the security camera, that's just all great stuff, which some of that has offset some general fund expenditure that we would need to be looking for or trying to find. Then other one, it would just be projects that we wouldn't have done or just waiting on, you know? I'll probably cut you off when I said that about the ARP funds.
Yeah, I definitely think there's some of those things we've been able to utilize those funds for that either we just maybe never would have been able to get, or we certainly would have had to push them off down the road, and like doing the roofs and doing these. would have had to push them off down the road, and like doing the roofs and doing these science labs, you know? To the amount of money we've been able to put towards those projects, that would have had to string out probably 10 years to ever hope to get all those done to the other, you know, funding that we had available. So that's been a real blessing. But I would agree, I don't think there is anything in there that we would have a hard time if someone comes, and they will be coming.
They will, yes.
They haven't managed us yet, but they will be coming to audit us on some of this. I have friends in other districts, they've already been to them and asked questions, you know, justify how this meets these criteria. I don't think there's anything in there that we would be able to justify. I think it's all very clearly within the regulations. I don't think any of it's even, even have to really spin a yarn to get them to agree to it. I think it's, it's very cut and dried that we.
And, and some things we've been proactive on, like these science labs. We didn't just go out and, I mean, bring this to you all. I had that meeting with, with Mr. Jay Ritter, he's at KDE, he's a wonderful associate commissioner there in finance, and he said, yeah, well, let me, let me talk to you how we can make this work versus doing it on the backside and then having to, you know, mess up. Same thing with the security cameras. I, I remember the email very well. I said, there's probably no way we can use ARP funds to purchase a security camera system for the school district. He said, yeah, there is because of the safe and secure learning part. So I think I mentioned that before, but Mr. Ritter's very much of a, of a person, let me, let me, let's see how we can make it work versus you can't make it work, you know? So he's, Ms. Carnes works closely with him. Anything else, Ms. Carnes? So the budget was built on the salary tables that you all had, had previously, or just, just now approved. So it's expenditures and revenues for Fund I at $24,522.
I'm worried for me.
I better get that straight.
I was going to say.
$24,522,127 for expenditures and revenues. I recommend the fiscal year 24 budget be approved in that amount.
Need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.[1692.16]